All right, I'd like to motion to open the zoning board of appeals.
Vote, I, okay, meeting is now open, all right, so the, we don't have any public hearings, that's easy. We're gonna, we're gonna, um, we're going to do the application review, decision review of scary, so, um, we're just gonna vote on whether or not the lawyer said is correct.
The resolution is right in the previous decision, your vote is whether or not to adopt this as you're writing.
Yes, so we're voting to do that, um, I'd like to motion to vote. Okay, so, um, all right.
I apologize, just for my, I'm still learning names, can I just get your name?
Cody.
So, thank you, sorry. Okay, sorry, Sean.
No problem, so, uh, we are going to, uh, vote.
Yeah, do you wanna do a name call?
Yeah, we can do it, you want to, yeah, we can do a name.
Yeah, um, don't have the list in front of me, I'm, I'm a father, I'm a few.
I, I vote to approve.
Yes.
Sean was over, vote to approve, we have name text too somewhere.
Okay, are they in that, yeah, okay, yeah. And I'm sorry, I still firstly the A, so I'm still learning here.
Okay, and there's only one that would work, only mine and Cody's, because everyone else doesn't, okay, Ian?
Ian Reichenberger votes with you.
Bobby Gavey vote to approve.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so we're done with that. All right, that one was easy, okay, so now we're going to, uh, vote, I motion to vote on the application viewed a bit, decision review on the Wells Fargo property. Yeah, motion, second, okay, slides, so we'll go through, um.
I can call the names.
Okay, awesome.
Uh, Cody.
Uh, approved.
Sean.
Approved.
Uh, Ian.
Approved.
And, uh, Robert.
Approved.
Thank you.
All right, so, those two people, you moved them on, oh, they already left, that was about, oh, they left, that's good, okay.
The signed resolution. Um, it's started tonight, uh, then it's gonna call tomorrow and probably by the end of the week. Thank you.
All right, so, um, we'd now like to hear from the, the thirty-one Water Street.
I'm better.
Eleven, sorry, eleven Water Street, can you guess them up and tell us what your deal is?
Yes, uh, so.
Yeah, yeah, that, yeah.
Uh, I'm Jesse Oliver, um, managing member of, uh, Ward Street Trail, and, uh, so, we had made a change in our plan, um, to, uh, eliminate a restaurant and an event space that we thought was going to become a parking problem. And, um, and because the Gateway District, um, language and the SLA, um, public, uh, having to have a restaurant open to the public, they didn't work well together, so we ended up with a nine-seat restaurant, which would have enabled us to have three parking spaces. Cause it was, I think it was three, it was three patrons per parking space, and then non-spaces, with the assumption that most of our people were going to be coming to our restaurant from the, uh, from the actual hotel, which was twenty-six rooms. Um, and the planning board, uh, then gave us a waiver based on a land, uh, based on, um, uh, land banking, uh, uh, one space, actually it was, originally it was three spaces, but because of the specific gateway, um, uh, parameters, they are looking for landscaping at the front of our property, um, to kinda, you know, chill the cars that are in the parking lot that exist now, and, um, that, there were two spaces that were gonna be land-banked at the front, but, and then there was one that was also gonna be land-banked, um, you know, that we made into a loading zone, and when we decided to eliminate the event space and the, uh, restaurant, um, because of the potential future parking problem, um, we, uh, added two rooms, and in, and what we were able to do is we took the one space back, which got us to thirty-one spaces, um, the waiver that they had originally give, gave us was for three spaces, um, and the one that was in the particular loading zone, um, could have been activated any, anytime if there was going to be a problem with, you know, the comings and goings of parking, uh, or patrons during, you know, the general public during the time, the times that the hotel was, uh, mainly occupied. Now, this was all based on an occupancy of seventy percent across the entire year. Um, you know, and on the weekends, the, the, we're, we're usually in the high eights and, you know, early nineties in occupancy, and during the week, um, it would have been, uh, a lower, um, percentage of, you know, fifty to sixty percent is typically what we run on. These studies were all done based on, uh, well, obviously we had, we had our, uh, part, we had a, uh, traffic engineer, um, and he did all, the whole, the full study on it, and I think it was also made available to you guys. Um, additionally, we, um, we gave our, um, history of the, the, the other hotel that we run in Woodstock, um, and that's where we, where, where we were able to give a good history of, you know, occupancy versus cars that come to the property, uh, versus, um, people that actually come from the bus, come from the bus that travels this area, so, um, the long and short of it is, the event space, we, we would like to turn into two additional rooms. Um, so, uh, that parking then, we have thirty-one spaces, we would be required thirty-two point two spaces, but obviously we round up to thirty-three, and we're asking for two parking spaces, um, to be forgiven.
How many rooms are in the, in the, uh, in the hotel?
Uh, there'll be twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight, so.
I mean, there are twenty-six that are currently approved with a restaurant and an event space.
Okay.
Uh, or a meeting space, meeting events.
And get, getting rid of the event space and restaurant, only clear the, the two additional rooms, or that's just what you decided to add?
Yeah, and then also the parking.
Okay.
Parking, we're not trying to, you know, ask for more than.
Right, so did the footprint of the building change?
No, it didn't, no.
Okay. So, you have twenty-eight rooms, so.
I'm just curious, what, what's the, a restaurant and an event space take up more space than two rooms?
Yeah.
Uh, so the, so, well, we have a gym, I mean, we're converting, we're converting some of the space to a gym, and wellness.
That was what.
For the people, uh, but the event space in and of itself was about, uh, nine hundred or so square feet, so we put that in, we put that in the two, two rooms, right. Like a meeting space, like, we were, you know, the whole plan was to have, like, company retreats, people would come during the week.
Like a conference hall.
That's right, and, and be able to use that space, but the question that we asked ourselves, based on an inquiry, you know, that we had at our hotel in Woodstock, was, you know, what happens if somebody, want, somebody takes out the entire block of the rooms, right? In this case, it would be twenty-six at that, at the particular approval. Um, and they then wanted to have, not, they wanted to have a wedding, but it was gonna be off-site, and this is, this is a real case that happened recently with Woodstock. But then they wanted to have, then we asked ourselves, like, was it, if they wanted to have a rehearsal dinner, they could have a rehearsal dinner, and all patrons from the hotel would be able to, you know, go to that rehearsal dinner. But then, what happens if they invited guests from outside of, um, the hotel? That's when we started thinking, wow, we don't wanna be in a situation where.
So, almost, uh, yeah, your restrictions of space made it where it might not even be reasonable.
I mean, the simple solution could have been, we could have just put a, a lot full sign out, but then that would have then pushed everybody to other places to park, and I just, I know that could have become a problem.
That's a weird order too, or it is, there's not like a lot of street parking in there to be done.
That's right too, and, you know, with the, would be, the parking areas across the street, you know, they're very clearly marked not to park there. I know there's a tow, oh, there's a rolling tow truck that takes those people out, so.
Right, yeah.
We didn't wanna have that situation.
What's the, so, I know the residential, or, or like a residential, you need two, and you one? You need one slot, one slot per room, so I'm wondering why twenty, how, is there, how many rooms are there?
Well, there were twenty-six, that's where our approval was, with three.
So there's no, like, two-bedroom ones, or?
No.
Right, so it's just straight-up hotel?
That's right.
Okay, so why, I don't understand, if twenty-eight, you should need like twenty-nine or thirty spots, like, you should be okay?
Yeah, except that, yeah, there's a stipulation on employees and employee parking, so, we would need, based on, based on the information, we have to provide three employee spaces per twenty, um, rooms.
Per twenty rooms.
Right, so if you do the math, it goes, it goes to four point two.
Four point two.
With twenty-eight rooms.
That's a weird, um, that's a, how many of those, how many of those have to be handicap?
Uh, I believe it's two, and we have, yeah, okay, and we have those two, for sure.
How, how many employees do you envision being there?
Um, you know, I mean, it's gonna, it, it's gonna vary, it's gonna, sometimes there's gonna be, you know, I, like, like, for example, during the day, when there's not a lot of, uh, people around, you know, or people are checked out, they usually check out at eleven o'clock, and they check in at three, so, cars move off-site at that point, right, that are employees, so, where we'll be highest with our employees is gonna be during housekeeping hours, during that eleven to three period. And then, and, you know, laundry will be gone, and then, you know, at night, there'll probably be a need, there, there'd be less of a need for parking for employees, so, I do, I think four, four spaces is enough, I'd like to believe that, um, but, you know, it's.
Uh, how, uh, how many rooms is the, the hotel in Woodstock?
Uh, twenty-three.
And there's one person at night?
Uh, yeah, actually in Woodstock, we, you know, it's, it, we close at seven, and we have people on call, but that's, that's it. Here, it'll be different.
Right.
Yeah.
But in, in, your clients are to have one or two at night?
Yes.
So the thirty-three rooms, thirty-three spots, is that based on the twenty-six rooms, or the twenty-eight rooms?
Twenty-eight. And, and actually, it was also, it was thirty-three for the restaurant, because we only had twenty-six rooms, so we didn't have to provide that additional parking space that's, uh, we're talking about the point two percent that rounds up. And we had three spaces for the restaurant, and that, um, was thirty-three spaces, and those, originally, when we presented our plan, we presented it with the two parking spaces at the front of the property, that, again, the planning board, you know, in the gateway language explicitly says that, you know, we want landscaping to kinda block that.
Right.
Now, this hotel also will have a living roof, um, we also were working with Ron Cronin to, you know, the hatched areas in front of, in front of this building, we're gonna do mural on the, on the actual, uh, pavement, um, because the planning board did not really like the fact that it was just a hatched area, and I, I, you know, thought, why don't we just contact Ryan, maybe we can do some street art in the parking lot, and that seemed to apply pretty nicely. But, eh, you know, to finish, um, the thought, they were okay with our thirty spaces based on getting rid of those two spaces as, at the front, and creating this nice landscaped area, and then giving us that one in that, uh, loading zone that, the loaded, the loading zone that we could always activate at a later time, if it became a problem.
So the thirty, the thirty-one, the thirty, it's thirty-two point something required?
So now, because we're adding the two rooms.
Right.
Right?
It's twenty-eight for the rooms.
It's twenty-eight for the rooms.
Four point.
Two.
For the staff. So, and one of those is the alternate loading dock of your current?
Um, yeah, so we've activated that one, so that's thirty-one.
Okay.
We're asking for variance is for two.
And your study indicates ninety percent on weekends?
Roughly.
Roughly, obviously, there's in boxes and that kinda thing, so ninety percent of, of the twenty-eight, so, in theory, you would have to be at full capacity with a full staff there in order to need thirty-two rooms.
Right.
Do you think you're going to have people biking from the city and stopping?
I do, and in fact, I think we're gonna end up with, uh, um, people coming in from the bus as they do at Wood, Woodstock.
Okay. To that, to that note, because it is a part of the Empire, or at least close enough to the Empire Trail, and also a decent days ride from the beginning of it, having done it, that is a logical.
Stop selection.
Thing, thing.
That's a great.
Wait, wait, you rode from New York City, huh? Uh, I, I've done it the opposite way.
Oh, wow.
And then bussed back up.
Awesome.
But my point is, is that this thing is popular now, right, fire trail, and it's going to be broken into day rides, so.
Well, you know, interesting you bring that up, um, we are hosting, you've heard of Backroads?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, Backroads, they, um, that's a group that, you know, has taken out blocks of our rooms for their riders that, at, in Woodstock, and I think that this is just gonna be another great spot, yeah.
So do you, so, anyway, the whole, I, that seemed like a circle, but are there bike racks in?
Oh, yeah, 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 in fact, I think we have more bike racks than, and in fact, we're gonna have storage area inside now as well for bicycles, and I think we have, I wanna say twelve, space, spaces per, per bike.
I think, having traveled with bikes.
Yeah.
When they have a room for your bike as opposed to taking it up to the room.
It's nice.
It's so nice, and also, bikes fall and damage things.
Yeah.
And as a hotel owner, I think, you, you could probably make a nice racking system that could, like, even if it just hooks on the ceiling, that people would be very willing to let you store them and not, cause when they're in the room, I went cross-country with three bikes.
Oh, wow.
I stayed in the hotel, it was a nightmare.
Yeah.
Cause you had bugs everywhere, and then, and then your choice is you leave your nice bike on the, on the car locked up, or you bring it down.
Right.
It was, it was.
Yeah, no, I, I could see, yeah, I, I have, I'm, I'm a mountain biker, and, you know, I have that same thought, like, do I leave it? I don't really wanna leave my bike on the car, you know, like, I don't know where, necessarily where we are, but. But yes, we will have stores for bikes inside, and, uh, we do plan to make bikes available to our, our guests, um, so that they can go out on a rail trail and enjoy, you know?
And there's rentals in here.
Yeah, there, there are rentals, which we will, you know, uh, one way or another will end up patronizing, I have done a lot of business with these guys over the years, so.
Do you, do you have a sense of, Woodstock, how mu, what percentage of your room rentals are from people that are taking the bus up?
So, when we originally did our study, um, when we were going before the planning board then, it was like fifteen to twenty percent. Right, but that was on, you know, that was like less rooms, it wasn't, you know, I think we, at the time, we had four rooms, so, and, you know, the, the bus drops people right off in the center of town, and they are able to just walk over, similar to how it is here.
Okay. Ian, do you have any questions?
No, I'm all good.
Okay, all right, we're good, okay, thank you. Um, so you're gonna have to do a bunch of stuff, you have to notify the neighbors, um, you have to post a sign.
Yeah.
Um, the, he'll help you with that.
Yeah.
So, i- as long as you do that, next week we'll have a public hearing, once we have the public hearing, then we vote on it, and then we just wait a month and you get the, the written.
Mr. Chair, are you setting a public hearing next month?
I, no, I was just telling them the process, I was about to do this.
And that's how, Jesse had no, if that is what end up, what we end up doing, and just make sure he follows instructions closely, cause otherwise it'll set everything.
Yeah, we've done it, we did it, the planning board, it's, uh, yeah, it's a pink notice, we put it on the building, yeah, we're, we're well-versed.
Okay, okay, cool, I just, we haven't been before, so.
No, absolutely, no, I, I wanna do it to the letter, for sure.
So do you have any questions, or any, um, other things you wanna add?
No, I don't, I don't think so, once you guys have any questions, I can answer.
Sounds like a nice project, uh, it's, it's. Anything on the rail trail that's gonna encourage people to use it, I, I sort of have a soft.
Yeah, and you know, uh, well, I'll add one other thing, it's like, in Woodstock, you know, we don't have a restaurant there either, and so we send all our guests to all the local restaurants, which, you have a plenty of local restaurants here, so, having one, you know, we don't necessarily need it, so, we wanna push everybody to the restaurants that are in town, and the nice thing about it is, they don't have to get in their car.
Yeah.
So, when they're here, they're less likely to get in their car, cause they could just walk right into town.
Well, once they have one, you have thirty-one parking space.
Yeah.
And I also like how you integrated the trail into it, and made like ways to, it looked like it was gonna be very easy to get off the trail onto the thing, that was.
Oh, yeah, so, yeah, we, we went through that, and, uh, you know, the planning board, um, yeah, wanted to have a sidewalk all the way around, even the front side of our property, which is great, and then at the backside, yeah, we're gonna, we're, you know, we're gonna actually incorporate, um, what, wherever tracks are still left on our site into, you know, an area that we could do some interpretive signage and, uh, explain what was there in the past.
Right.
Working with the, uh, Welcome Valley Land Trust, yeah.
Cool, excellent, right, you're good? Okay, so, uh, I'd like to motion for a public hearing at the next meeting, which would be?
July night.
July night, thank you. Motion? Okay, vote, I, okay, passes unanimously, all right, thank you.
Excellent.
Um, the next time, I, I, please bring, um, like, some plans.
Size plan.
Full-size plans, because, like, I went through it and looked at the little pictures.
Okay.
But, um, if, if people from the public are here.
Yeah.
It would be very important to have that.
One hundred percent, and I also have renderings too, so.
Yeah, that would be, renderings are even better than plans, we like, we like plans, everyone else likes renderings.
Okay, all right, so, thank you for your time, appreciate it.
Just, I have one more question, did the planning board indicate, I didn't see it in the minutes, if you, if you secure the variance, do you need to go back to them, or?
Um, you know, they had suggested that I come see the zoning board, and then, yeah, okay, and it was a team with, you know, we lost a lot, unfortunately, so. Um, okay, thank you, oh, you sent me, um, what I need. Yes, okay.
That, 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 far with the next thing.
All right, I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, how nice that you.
Mike, do you need to know that, cause you want seeker, you know, things like?
Exactly, that's what I wanted to find out, seeker still, but.
But I think it's going to.
I, I mean.
I mean, I don't think that's what they want.
No, it wouldn't.
There. Yeah, I think it makes calls.
They wouldn't sort of set back, it's a, it's a, this is.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
Or, 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 hotels.
Pretty cool thing.
Yeah, I will.
Yeah, yeah, that's true, yeah. All right, so, uh, so now, uh, well, sorry, one forty-nine, one fifty-one, uh, Justin Street?
Yes.
Come on down. Do you need an easel?
Uh, we have.
Oh, you do, okay.
We have one over here, but that's great. Good evening, Howard Glad from Tubby and Spader, on behalf of the F C, Mike Bogendorf from Light Design. It's a long year. Give Mike a second.
I heard that you like plants, so I'll put the plant instead of the number, yeah.
All right, so, um, we are here this evening to appeal, uh, the code enforcement officer's determination that we would side guard setback variances for this project, uh, on the north and south of the building, or in the alternative, um, if you don't agree with our interpretation requests, the two side yard setback variances um, that I just noted, so.
Okay, are you, is it, is this a joint application here for, uh?
It's.
Uh, the appeal and the variances, or is this just the, I, I answered the question.
So, to clarify, we receive both applications for in reviewing it with, with Alex, the municipal officer. We're, and my determination will review the, the appeal first, because if you secure the appeal, then you don't need the variance.
Of course.
If you do not secure the appeal, then we will hold with the variance, but we're, we're not gonna do it simultaneously. We're doing the appeal, and then if the appeal is successful or not successful, we have been triggerable.
Are you, are you a lawyer?
Yes, I am.
Okay, so, when I went through it, the form was filled out, see attached, see attached, see attached, see attached.
There was a revised.
There was a revised one, but did you fill out the form for the, or, did you fill out the form to, to, for the building inspector one? Cause I did not see that, I saw the one, I did, I, I was very confused on this, because when I was reading through it, there was, it was the zoning board, you wanted appeal, and I did see one form that was not filled out, which upset me, but then I saw another form that was filled out, so then I was like, okay, but the title didn't make any sense. I will say that we've had three zoning board appeal things happen, none of them have worked. Um, if you wanna spend three months chasing that down, for us to probably shoot it down like we always do, you're more than welcome to do and push your project back, the other one has a really much better chance of success.
You mean the, the variance?
The variance, we've given many variances for this, I know as a lawyer, you probably like to do as many of these papers a, as possible to, you know, you wanna be thorough, but I'm gonna recommend that unless you have six months you wanna burn, to not do that.
Okay.
Um, you might wanna confer with your client for five seconds and figure that out, but that, cause.
I think the client would be in favor of timing over.
Yeah, agreed, yeah, and I'm, I'm just covering for my colleagues, I can't answer your, uh.
I can be, for my question. I, I can explain the rationale for that, and the, the, what, what Chair is saying, because you have a much better chance on the variance, in his view, than on the appeal, and the reason is, with the position, if you were taking the appeal, you were essentially saying that the building inspector's wrong, the building inspector decided that you needed a variance, and other, and when he's really, he's really favoring the written code instead of the, um, instead of the, the, the table.
Yeah.
There's a number of reasons why that's probably, in the view of the chair, and, you know, depending whatever happens here, I don't wanna prejudice it, but that, that would be the more instinctive view, because this is downtown business district, um, we're looking to minimize the, in general, the distance between the, um, uh, building, so it's, it makes sense, if given the, given the clear disagreement, where they both can't be right, but they're diametrically opposed, it makes more sense that it is a, um, a, a, a maximum, um, uh, setback, and so, and, and, and we, and this board has given variances to where the building's in the same situation.
Yeah, so, understand.
I don't like arguing against.
Was that, was that correct?
The definition of the code.
Yeah.
Variance is contrived, in my opinion.
Yeah.
It, it.
We've never had, I've been on this board for ten years maybe, and we've never had one work, and it's, they've cost the client a lot of money, because they do.
Yeah, my appeal.
The, the ones that appeal, yeah, they always run out of the rest, girl, they owe us money for them.
I, I, I just asked the client the question, he is on Zoom, I don't know if we could let him chime in. Sure.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, hi, good evening.
Um, buddy, so, we have two routes we can take. The first one, I'll be on it.
Yeah, sure, so, um, the first one is like, just a, a, an appeal of the determination that we need a sideyard setback variance, um, or in the alternative, we can just proceed with the variance relief that the code enforcement officer is saying that we need, um, and what the board is basically telling us now is that their preference is to proceed just with the variance approval. Um, I believe we've submitted everything that we need for that, um, so.
You got both applications in, right, so there's no, oh, yeah, special mutations.
Yeah, so in the interest of time, and basically the direction of the board that they've given us tonight, which I think we should follow, um, is just to proceed with the area variance aspect, um, of the project, cause they're saying, although we filed, um, for a request for an interpretation, or in the alternative, the variance, that their procedure is to either just go forward with the interpretation, see where that goes, and then switch to the variance, which obviously lengthens the amount of time that we would be before the C D I, so we're just looking for your input or confirmation that we should proceed with just the area variance.
Yes, of course, I would certainly follow the board's advice without a doubt, um, and I appreciate their input and their candor on the matter.
Perfect, all right, so, so now tell us what you wanna do. Yeah, sure, so, um, just to start with a, I guess, general project overview to kinda set the scene for the variance request. Yeah, sure. So, um, just to start with a, I guess, general project overview to kind of set the scene for the variance request. Um, so this is a three-story mixed-use building. On the first floor facing North Chestnut Street will have about seven thousand four hundred square feet of retail. Um, and then the rest of the building is made up of a hundred and twenty-four residential units. Um, and as noted, this is in the N B R zoning district, and the total lot area is four point seven acres. And it's just north of the Agway redevelopment project, just this out there off the site plan. And we're actually about like a third of a mile north of the Zero Place Development as well. Um, so we submitted to the plan. Yeah. Yeah, so we submitted to the planning board in March, um, and we appeared at their April sixteenth meeting. Um, and I wasn't at that meeting, but my colleague tells me that the planning board generally voice, voiced some support for. Um, what we're trying to accomplish with this proposed site plan. Um, so what we, the relief that we need is, as noted, your code. Permits a maximum of fifteen feet for side yard setbacks. The plan that we're showing you has a seventy-foot setback to the north and then a fifty-foot setback, or fifty-eight-foot setback to the south. And the, our justification for the proposed site layout and for the variance requested is that, um, in the primary one is that. The New York State Fire Code for three-story buildings requires two points of access. Um, and they also require that they be located, um, cer- at certain spots on the property as well, so that. We believe we are showing a plan that aligns with the New York State Fire Code. Requirements and also with this current plan, it allows us to maintain the desired pedestrian-friendly streetscape in front of the building. As opposed to an alternative design that may not require variances would require us to push the building further back in the site and put some of the parking. Right up on the street front, which I think is an undesirable, uh, design for, for the front of the building. Um, also, under the current design, it does allow us to provide some open space in the middle of the two wings of the building. For use of the residents.
So, I mean, the bottom line is that the reason why you would need, for example, a seventy-foot variance on one side is. Uh, combination of the required access for the fire code as well as a couple of spaces that you would need because of the lot configuration.
Yes, that's correct.
It was si- seventy north and.
Fifty-eight to the fifty-eight feet on the south, um, and actually.
And, and that is hmm, at the farthest point that I'm seeing there, because obviously that, that.
Yes, I think it's, yeah, the, the farthest point of the building to the lot line and then same on the south.
And that, and that's those B spaces are including these parking lots.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's, it, it.
What is the distance from the edge of the parking lot to the property?
North or?
Well, eventually, vote.
Uh, I would say that in the north, twenty-six, five, five. Uh, so you're looking at about thirty-four feet where the dimension line goes through it, but it's angled, so it varies.
Yeah.
Um, outside, the, the edge of the parking is about six feet off the property line. There's also a, a stream on the north side and an old bridge. I'll take thirty-two, my.
So pardon, one time, pardon, there's several distances on the north side, is, is to stay clear of the stream?
Yes, correct.
Put that access in there between the stream and that, and that.
So, so you're asking for, you're only asking for. Uh, this is when I was reading this, this was what I wasn't clear on. So you're asking for the, the north and the south. You're asking for more space than the fifteen feet. The, the building seems rather further back off the road than all the other buildings. So is that another exception you're asking for? Is that allowed by the code? Cause that looks really far back.
The curve makes it.
It's, it's the curve and it.
Yeah, we find, at this point, close, right, at this southern point.
Cause I thought that was supposed to be fifteen feet off the.
So there's a whole thing going on with this, uh, and we have had conversations with the planning board and the, and the zoning administrator about. The front setback and they seem to be comfortable. It's under the discretion of the planning board to allow that. As long as there's a reason for it, we're providing a, a public space in the front and. You also notice that the property line does a little jog here.
Oh.
So it's, it's, I, I don't know why that is. It's, it's gotta be some reason for the D O T.
Well, they probably cut straight and then there, there's probably two lots.
So, yeah, there used to be a triangle a lot here too, that probably was associated with the old road.
With the road.
So is this an application for any area variance for the front as well?
No, so we believe, yeah, so we can, we believe we comply with all requirements of code and actually your. Density control schedule for the front yard. Um, it has a note which says, simply just says sufficient space to allow for construction of sidewalks. And related pedestrian amenities, um, and that's what we're trying to accomplish that day with that front space. Um, is like that pedestrian amenity space and we have a rendering of that on the other side of the board if you wanna say.
Yeah, I was gonna ask if we can see, see a, a rendering if you have it.
So you're gonna be curved between the cars and the, and the bike path. Or you're gonna.
Long state parking you're talking about?
Yeah.
Um, no, there's a little, uh, handy strip in there.
Yeah, then they're not gonna work. They're gonna park right on it. They park on the street and they're both.
So that's, we do have a, application into the D O T. They're reviewing that now. Um, we don't have any comments from them. Another thing that we're speculating, um, we're proposing two ingress, egress entrances. Um, the D O T required the Agway, uh, development, as you can see, to the south of the building here in the lower render. They required them to have a, a full access to the south and rights and rights out only on their north end. We're. Sort of expecting that they may ask the same for us there, uh, which kind of furthers the, the need to have those two. Paths around the building because you'll have to be able to go left out of one of those entrances. Um, we're not sure if they're gonna allow that parking along the frontage yet. Um, I believe that Agway went for that and they, they shot that down. They shut down the, the bike path, but.
Do you?
We're just not sure, yeah.
Do you need those spaces to make it work?
Um, we would like to have them.
I mean, as far as like your.
We, we would still be parking compliant under the shared parking calculation. Right now, we're parking compliant. Whole.
Right.
If we remove those spaces, we still have enough, uh, if you applied that, that parking, uh, that's the shared parking calculation. And are you, uh, we require one sixty-eight, we have one sixty-eight, that number goes down to like one forty-six perhaps. One forty would be the number if you applied the shared parking calculation.
Well, the. The, the seven thousand square feet space, is that the front of the building? Or is it, i- is it, is it the front of the building from the front to the back completely?
Or is it, is the front of the, the ground floor of the front of the building?
So it goes, so you can go, it goes completely through. Um, or is there apartments on the back of it?
There are apartments on the back.
So it's only the front? How many feet? How, how deep are those?
I would say it's probably half of the building, the building depth is.
It's not a lot short. It looks like a lot short. So it's long.
Yeah, it's long, but it's, uh, now I don't have the other.
Yeah, that's why.
The goal of that is around sixty, I, the apartment.
Yeah, if you have, if you have a, over, yeah, I'd like to look at it.
Yeah.
Here, I have. Other.
Right. And small, but. So Mike, I just had a question to kind of clarify.
Yes.
The, the seventy feet on the.
So they have a north side.
Uh, so to the reasons, one, two, you're asking for a variance. I think you said something along, the fire code was one reason.
Correct.
Um.
Fire code means that, that tells them they need to have ingress on both sides.
Right, but to, to plan for, for, for fire abras, is that, is that?
Well, they're trying to maximize them.
Yeah, okay, yeah, because that's. Okay, and then, um, you also said something about a stream on the north side.
Yeah, there's a stream.
The whole idea is a lot of place supposed to be like zero sticks, you know, a lot of floors.
Okay.
There's a hole there under the street right here, whoop, the stream runs through. There's an old bridge here that we're just gonna leave in place because we don't know what the disposition of it, who owns it, you know, uh. So that, the extent of that ridge probably comes out to about here. We need to be able to fit transformers in there. We have a water line coming in.
Are you gonna, are you going to, um, access the rail trail?
We are considering it, yes. It's not necessarily on the plan yet, but if the planning board, um.
If they want. That's like a, that, that's a, that's an area where there's a lot of space where there's no access. I mean, even to your stores like people would. If there's a coffee shop in there.
Right.
They would really appreciate.
Yeah.
It'd be much easier to rent a professional space if there's access to the rail trail.
So. On the, on, the south is the Agway.
Awesome, correct, yes. So Agway's air, Bosse's is right there.
So when you're going down the road.
I mean.
Now, I know where they are. I'm trying to picture what we approved.
Well, the board should also be aware that not only is Zero Place well to the south, but there's, there are two also mixed-use buildings.
Yeah, we had.
Variants, similar variants that are south, and it's at one thirty-seven, one forty-five.
Yeah, we already did that, right, yeah.
So you're gonna.
So.
Southwest you can.
That's what I'm trying, the one that's directly south, did we give a northern variance to it? Oh, do you recall?
Well, they, we gave whatever variances they asked for and for exactly the same reason. In fact, and one of the two, either one thirty-seven, one forty-five also had a stream that they, that, that was.
Yeah, they had some protect.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So.
But I guess my, my thought process is, is, is just that. The area variant, the way that that was written was to keep everything relatively continuous and to not have big open spaces. And with, right, the two parking lots budding up to each other.
We're starting to get into.
Or that, like, not to, that, that rendering look like a big open space on there, you know, like, it's hard, it's hard to not look at that.
And saying aside the snafu in the, in the, uh, the bulk table. And just looking at the rule, which is, you know, fifteen foot maximum, what we're seeing is, you know, all these mixed-use buildings are applying for variances because they've.
Well, of course, because you're at the exits.
They have the exits and then in some cases there were streams and in this case they've got a little bit of extra parking they're using as well, so. Where the streetscape that was sought to be achieved by the rule is, you guys can make your own decision, but is it, is it?
Well, but I mean, even the, for the fire code, you need thirty foot on both sides.
Yeah, well, this is the only, this is the only area.
So I'm not.
I know, if they might go easy and.
Access, is, is the access need to be thirty feet?
Yeah.
I think the intent of this, uh, setback requirements. It would work much better if we had a road behind our parcel that we could access from.
Right.
Then you could.
Yeah.
Basically connect buildings along that frontage, but this site, the Agway site, and even I think Zero Place probably doesn't have. They have a road on the south side and maybe thirty-two, but they didn't.
Out with that happening and.
It's something that what the, the village board should think about in terms of how this is planning out.
So there, there really is enough. Last there was an action about connecting.
So that you really don't necessarily share.
Project or align your project like this, this, the, the fifteen-foot setback wasn't, this project wasn't.
This is actually a bit of an. This is. Existing condition too, because on the south side, the existing building is a hundred and twenty-six feet away. Now we're moving it to fifty-eight feet, so we are moving the southern portion.
And what'd you do to change that?
Uh, it's, it's just the length of the building is longer than.
Right.
The whatever's there.
And did that, that increase the commercial?
Yes.
Space because it's the front sort.
Uh huh, yeah.
Yeah, I, I guess that, the, the issue is, is that. To me, like, yeah, you have, okay, so there's a little bit of parking space, but we. The twenty-four, thirty-foot required for the fire, fire foot access on both sides. Like, there isn't a way to do it without the variance.
Well, I mean, if you get rid of those parking spaces on the south.
But then they have to draw the building.
Yeah, that's, that, I mean, the building should be bigger. That would be the way to get the variance away. Like, the one on the north, I almost have a lot more sympathy for because.
Yeah, that's.
That's, that's weird and there's stuff, but the one on the south is unnecessary. Like, those, those six spots could go away. You make the building longer and you don't, you only need one variance versus two. I mean.
Six. We, we still need access on the south.
I think, I think. Yeah, no, I, I know that, but you, you have, you have a whole bunch of parking spaces there that don't have to be there. They could be someplace else.
So you, you would have to.
And that make the building longer. I mean, and then you, then that would be more in compliance.
We can.
One of the things that the board has to consider for an area variance is whether it's the minimum variance necessary.
Yeah.
And in response to your question, this is a neighborhood development zone, so the, the concept is that it should. Instead of typical suburban zoning where you have maximum setbacks because we keep things apart, in a neighborhood zone, you want it to look more like Main Street. Right, so you want, so in fact, in this case, that's why they have a maximum setback, because you want the things to go together. You want it to look like Main Street where you have. All the buildings are kind of all scrunched together and all slid out. And what we're finding is that they're trying to build buildings, like the buildings are good. But they, because of access rules and things like that, a couple of streams, we've seen none of them being blown together. Then again, in this case, they wouldn't be blown together anyways, because he's not next to you, you know, there's, you know, he's not next to one forty-five, he's next to the Agway. Right, so we're, you know, there's the, the concept needs to be rethought because we're seeing, we're giving variances to every one of these. But for me, so.
We should get the content, we need to use up the concept of what they're doing or the concept, you know, stats, the, the.
Well, they need to do what they're doing. The question is how, now that we know what's happening, getting these buildings together. So, the reason why there's this confusion, the table is still there. Your house is supposed to be so far. That's why the village board won't do that.
Yeah, I just wanna clarify one thing. We would still need a variance for the south side, even if we got into those parking spaces, because we're almost saving about eighteen feet. But eighteen feet, you know, walking near, but it's huge. But that's enormous. But, but, you, you know, the whole idea here is you wanna have the buildings close together so that people walk from building to building. You want people who are living in that structure to be walking to Zero Place to buy things. You don't want people in Zero Place to be walking to your structure to buy things. And the way you do that is by putting them close together. And, and on the north side, you've done a better job. On the south side, you've done a worse job and.
Well, on the north, that's actually more variance request, but there's.
There's, there's a reason for that.
Those things seem, when, when we get to our, the question like, is this self-created? But I feel more strongly that that's.
Well, it's part of factors, that's not secret.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry. And we, when we talk about our five facts.
The other one, it's quoting the minimum variance necessary, which is actually outside the fire tractor, but that's something we have to do as well. This is the minimum necessary, getting the building.
Right, and so I, I guess what, without speaking too much on the matter, what I'm getting from, from Sean and, and kind of. Maybe some of our other questions is that the north, even though it's a larger number. Has more things that are to be considered.
Because of the stream.
Because of the stream, because of the weird bridge thing, because of the fact that there's not another property.
North of the, this. And then the property north side is Bosse's, so that's never gonna go anywhere, so I'm not worried about that one.
Like having, having like a stretch of land there doesn't.
You know, as you want, you're more concerned about bringing the building closer to the thing on the south.
Yes, the one, because the, the problem is. People from Bosse's aren't gonna be, Bosse's isn't gonna move, it's not gonna go anywhere. It's state, it's state property. That's gonna be Bosse's for. For, until, until I'm not gonna worry about it. The, the stuff that's happening below you to the south is gonna be walkable. And all, and this building was designed to minimize the amount of, of retail space and maximize the amount of, of. Of, of housing. So you've, you've shortened the one thing that you don't like and you've made the things that you really like much bigger. And so the, the design, the architectural design is designed for that. It, you're, you're putting all the, all that construction going to the backs. Is maximizing the amount of space. And I, I don't have too much of a problem with this, by the way. This, this just, it's just what you did. What you're doing, I feel like you're doing it a little bit too much to the south. Like, you should, you should get some parking, you know, figure out the parking thing, move that in a little bit closer.
I just looked at the fire access, the, the minimum unobstructed width is twenty-six feet.
Twenty-six, yeah.
Yeah, and, and it's, it's something like. It's thirty feet. It's thirty people or thirty, right?
For a three story, but that's not.
Yeah, you're, you're way, you're way over like what's needed there, and I'm not, and I get it, I understand what you're trying to accomplish, but. Like, this is not. It's supposed to be close and it's, you know, it's, it's fifty nine feet from the corner of the building to the property line, that's a lot. Yeah, that's a thirty something foot ask.
Yeah, so I think, um, yeah, we're happy to look at removing those parking sites, spaces, but we just gotta make sure. That removing those, whatever, six to ten parking spaces to bring the building closer. Doesn't create the need for an additional parking variance, because I think, you know, if we don't get the space up front.
Or if it does, I mean, this, this board will grant that variance, so the question is.
I would.
Would, would, is, is the chairman be saying that he'd rather grant the variance for three parking spaces to keep the building a little bit closer, I'm not sure that.
Yeah, I, I would have, I, well, in my opinion. And this is just made, this is not the board, just made, that, the, making this. The, the walking, the southern part of this bothers me, because if you have a huge gap between two buildings, you're not gonna do it, and then. Ten years from now, you're gonna be coming back to us being like, we can't rent out the bottom retail, because no one's walking there, well, yeah, because everyone's spread out as far as they could. So, you know, just. Um, that's, that's really an issue with this, I don't, I don't know how, how you guys feel about this.
We, we've kind of seen this with all of these, the, the four or maybe it's.
One thirty seven and one forty five in the last six months.
Yeah, and the other most legal point, but what, what was the one?
No, south of Zero Place, where we gave a height variance for a.
Yeah, but that, they, they, that was a big variance and then they were, they gave. They didn't have to deal with it because they gave up a bunch of property that's actually for the rail trail, and then they, they, so that.
But regardless, my point is, is all, like, I, once again, I, I understand. Why, like, it's, it's a numbers game, but. You're required to have a certain amount of commercial and where you make. In this town, like for sure money is not in that, it's in maximizing your residential. And that kind of just feels like what everybody's trying to do. And it kind of feels like we've been hoping that, in a way. Because. If the face of the building is. Allowed to be brought smaller to fit these circumstances. That's basically what we're doing, like, if, if you had to stretch that out another eighteen foot, one more. Or a slightly bigger area.
And a whole bunch of apartments above it too, because you're gonna get.
That's, that's the struggle, because that will require more parking spaces by increasing the building size. A larger variance requirement.
Take two buildings off this one, take buildings off this one, then you, you put into a variant and take them off the back. Not that we're gonna tell you how to do your job, because that would be ridiculous, but it's definitely doable, um, Ian, do you have anything to add on this, any questions?
Uh, no, not so far, I agree with um. With Sean, remove two apartments on the back to extend out the. It seems like we're just assessing the issue of expanding the area. And reducing eighteen feet is enormous, adding an entire extra retail spirit space to the front of the space can. Be an extreme improvement and not a much easier time. Uh, looking at a parking variance round then.
How many space, how many parking spaces are you, Sean, proposing?
It doesn't, once at end, it's sort of cut off.
One sixty eight, so, so three had to go, you're losing basically um. Two percent, one and a half percent.
It's more than that, I don't know how you could, because you can't bump the front of that out without losing some of the spaces that now are on the wrong side again. I mean, once again, this isn't real my.
But even if it was five.
My thing, but if you bring this out, you can't just, you're not just losing these. You, you have to get there.
Yeah, there's, there's a, a pink in the road, it's, it's.
You're, you're, you're losing.
It, it's more than.
A dozen.
It's more than the width of that building.
You're, you're losing a dozen, like, probably. What is? The situation with. With no parking spaces for the section between the building. With the green street.
Um, we're just trying to create a. A, a view corridor there, towards the rail trail that, you know, you're just not looking for cars, you're just.
Right.
You're seeing nature.
Is it like a patio? Is it like a patio?
It's, it's more of like a, yeah, there's, there's some little terraces in there. Um, a lot of uh greenery, we're actually, it's a big fire retention. Yeah, it's, it's a big garden, big, big rain garden, if you will.
And so, yeah, so there are parking on either side of the road for that view in that, that wedge. Right.
Rob, Jim, any questions or anything like that, any concerns?
So, no, I mean, the only other question I had is, I mean, would it be helpful for us? To, to get input from the fire department in terms of what they think would be, you know, I know what the code says, but in terms of clearance system. Actual terms, you know, for their apparatus.
Oh, they, they can't lower like the, the minimum.
No, I'm just saying if they think that the twenty six is gonna be enough, or if they do think they're just gonna need more, if they need to get a ladder truck in there, you know, I just don't know. Yes, I'm just asking. Would it be helpful for us in, in terms of making a decision?
Have you guys been before the planning board yet, or do you?
Yes.
What, what are they thinking?
They. They understand. Our struggles with the code, I guess, with the side yard setbacks.
What do they want to see in terms of the building, in terms of the, uh, are they concerned about the parking, and how interested are they, maybe, as, as the chair was saying, maybe.
I, I can say that the, the chairman. Did mention that there's a lot of parking, although we do need the code. Um, I'm not sure, it's, it's like a, what that means at this point. They seem to be generally positive towards the building. We didn't have. That much of a discussion about the side yard setbacks, other than the fact that we need to either get a variance.
Did they declare lead agency?
Yes.
Or did?
I believe so.
That they would have circulated, um, well, if they knew variance was necessary, they would have circulated that to the board, but we didn't get that, didn't we?
I haven't got any, I, they haven't talked about.
That. I'll double check that and see if they did.
I, I believe that, um. The decision was made to go to the ZVA after speaking to Alex.
So they moved out of the region, maybe very much.
I mean, there's some things that have to go before, especially with stuff written. Um, alcohol comes to mind, they, 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 you can't put a bar anywhere in the vaults, because there's churches everywhere. So even, you can't really write the law. Like, it's just something we always get, but even, this is something that we've dealt with. The last three times, we've always managed to figure something out, like, we're, we, we, we're not gonna. We're not gonna block you, but we do want, or we, there's usually some concessions. And some things moved around, I think in every case, we've asked for some, some reasons.
Intention is to make projects work.
Yeah.
Uh, but. Were, there's things that are not part of the flexibility also, and that's something we have to learn on our field.
So, is this a type one action?
Yes.
It is. Wow, okay, so we, there's gonna be, there has to be a review on this for seeker, and so someone's gotta do that. And I'm not sure if the planning board did it, yeah, we have to find that out, and you may have to do it first. If we're, we're gonna go first.
Yeah, not, I wasn't at the planning board meeting and started her for a.
That's interesting, because we, I was thinking if we were on our own, this was, this would be a type two action, because. There's a provision for um individual. Honestly, don't know what the word individual means there, I was gonna ask counsel for his opinion on whether these are individual. But it, it doesn't matter, it's type one. Either way, the planning board has to.
I, I'm not hating it, but I'm not.
But, and we've got to figure that out. Let's put that on. And, and the questions that this board, the reason I'm getting into that is the question that this board is asking becomes secret questions. How do we want to handle, like, the question, the impact on the streetscape?
I know exactly what you're saying, and I, yeah. I don't think they, I think what happened is some sense. Correctly, but wrong, did you just have one meeting with the?
Yeah, just one meeting.
I think they had one at the duckery meeting, and then after that.
Planning board sent him here.
The planning board sent him here, but out there, I think the planning board asked Alex to bear a line.
Yeah.
I don't think the.
Yeah, I don't. They go to Alex.
Yeah, they went, they went, the way I remember when I read was they sent it, they sent it back to Alex to say, please take a look at this. Alex looked at it and said, yes.
So let me explain this to the board. Um, if indeed this is a type one action, the seeker, because of the site, number of apartments or something like that. One of the seeker rules is that for a type one action, there must be a coordinated review. Otherwise, if there was, if it was unlisted action. It's allowed, although not favored, for each individual board can do its own review, and that sometimes can help us out, because in this case, there's an argument, this would be type two. So we would, we would just do it separately in that, you know, uncoordinated, and our little piece of it is type two, because it would be arguably, we're still figuring that out. But if it's type one, it doesn't matter, because it's gotta be coordinated, which means either this board. Or the planning board is going to have to circulate a notice of intent to be lead, and one, one of the board will be the lead. And where that becomes important is, the board that's not the lead takes a step back, or the lead agency conducts a seeker review. And the other reason that's important, aside from procedurally, is the question the chair was asking, which is how does this fit into the. Overall goal of the streetscape becomes a seeker issue, where before, if we, if we, if there was no seeker for us, and it was type two, for example, and just on us. We could just decide that and file factors, and it'll just be us, but. We may end up, the planning board, for instance, if the planning board was lead, they'd have figured that out for us, they would, they would crunch that entire issue. Uh, what, how do we handle the question of the required access for the fire trucks and the fact that we're sort of. Adam, bringing these buildings farther apart.
The, the one we've done in the past of all ones too.
Yeah.
So, so has the planning board, you said it's just the one meeting with the planning board, so they really haven't dissected this at all?
They took a look, they realized the variance, it's, it's appropriate for the planning board to not move forward with the site plan approval until we know the zoning is right, which means getting variances from the ZVA. The problem is, they may have assumed that we could just do a separate um, uh, variance without doing seeker, uncoordinated review, but if this is type one. They can't, and I, I'll talk, Emily Spencer, who, who, who um is the uh council for the planning board, my partner, I see her every day, so I, I can.
Yeah, I don't think.
We should have done.
I don't think we've ever been lead agency of anything, I can't think of a situation where we've.
You're allowed to, though.
Yeah, okay.
And the way this, just, just, you know, the procedure. Like, just even either, because you want to be lead or to get the ball rolling. We could, or the planning board will, do a, uh, do something called a notice of intent to be lead, you would make, do a resolution to that, then you'd send out a letter. To all the other involved agencies that says, we want to be lead here, and the other agencies can have thirty days to object. And um, the objections could be, if they do it, they could, it could either be contentious or just saying, no, you know, really, should be the planning board wants to step in. And then after thirty days, that gets figured out, and that's how. But, and the point is, if you're in that process, if you receive that letter. Um, or you, even if you issued a letter, but you don't end up being lead, as long as you're identified, as in your agency's identified, and you are part of that process where you can decide. Then, the lead agency that's chosen does the seeker review, and all the other involved agencies don't. You, we just sit back and wait until they do a de- negative declaration or a positive declaration, that's, that's sort of the core. Seeker decision, whether or not to do an EIS, um, usually, most, most projects get a negative declaration, but the point is, in doing that. Either stage, either the, the declaration of significance or if it was an EIS, all the seeker issues get crunched. So if there's a runoff issue, if there's a traffic issue, if there's a, a visual issue, then the seeker process will tell these guys what they want it to look like, you know. Or they can leave that for cycling, but it could be done in seeker, certainly the issue of the impact on the neighborhood, which could involve the issue that you raised, Mr. Chairman, which was. Are we moving, is this building a little bit too far to the north, because of the streetscape that we want, how are we gonna handle that? That can become a seeker issue, that's why I'm sort of projecting that now, the planning board may end up. Whoever, and as you said, this board typically is not the planning board in this town, in this village, and in most towns typically is.
Yeah.
So ultimately, this is a type one, which is, which is new to us, because the other one thirty seven, one forty five were type two, because they. May, they may have had fewer apartments, for example, so, um, if that's the situation. We have to do a coordinated review, and the planning board needs to know that.
I might make the suggestion too, this might be a great application that. Uh, the applicant requests the board to uh. Uh, have a county planning department, what's called a gateway meeting. What the county planning department is able to do is bring all the players together at one meeting. Department of Health, uh, DOT, uh. Any, any others. All at one table, and it, it's a very productive session where there would be somebody obviously from the ZVA, somebody. From the planning board, the attorneys, the consultants, and it's literally, they put the. Plan down in the middle of the table and go, go around and discuss it and come to some agreement, and it makes the process go smoother. Um, how that fits into the seeker process is still a little bit murky in this particular application, but. It's a way to get everybody at the same table without violating court and open meetings laws, because it's. Specific representatives of each board, as long as you don't have a court, it has been now court tested. Uh, that it is. We did, but it was overturned by the appellate court, because it, it was a. Quite fair, and I'm the chair of the county planning board, full disclosure, uh, but it was a, a terrible decision that was overruled.
I, I saw that.
And on seeker.
So you guys are caution again.
Yes. Yeah, I, I checked our planning board application and what we said in our carbon letter, that it's an unlisted action, so if we weren't, you weren't circulated to, maybe that was why, to allow this.
So it's, so it's not type one?
Yeah, I'm gonna double check on that, but the position that we're taking is.
Then we, then we can decide to move forward without, uh, with, with that, without coordinating with the planning board, and it's unlisted. Uh, well, it's unlisted, because we can actually argue, the overall action's unlisted, this, this is getting seeker weirdness, but it can be type two for us, because it's just about, it's just. Um, area variances for, for.
So, I, I kind of just wanna say.
And the council as well.
Yeah, for my fellow board members to kind of under, understand, I keep kind of circling back to the same thing. I kind of wanna make sure that we're not approving. This. Just. To maximize. Rental space. And minimize storefront, I wanna make sure that the reason is, is that it has to happen. And not just to benefit.
Well, what you may end up finding when you investigate is that it has to happen up to a certain point. And maybe beyond, especially the different seventy feet, and maybe beyond that point, beyond that number, is because they've, they've configured a certain.
So I know. Because from doing these, and because of the fact that there is a back access, that there has to be a setback variance, because you can't fit twenty six feet into fifteen feet. Yeah, or thirty, regardless.
And five feet is, is way different than thirty feet.
But, what I'm saying is, is even, even this distance wouldn't necessarily bother me if I looked at this and it looked like it had to be that way. And that's why the north doesn't bother me as much. But, I guess I, I just wanna be clear to you guys, if that's where my head is, that I. I don't want there to be a big gap in the buildings just for, just because it's helpful. In the design of the building to minimize the front and to maximize somewhere else.
Do I throw one other concept out there, which is that the building to the south that we're sort of trying to bring things into is, is Agua. Right, I mean, in terms of the streetscape, it's.
Well, it's a, a, it's a hotel.
Oh, oh, yeah, oh.
Yeah.
So you've, so you've got another proposal there.
Yeah, and one down from that.
I know, one thirty seven.
This, this whole color was getting developed.
And they're all commercial on the. Yeah, and so you're gonna, and they're all, they're all three story, they're all similar. You know, block shape, and so. That blocking shape. Looks fine if it's continuous, if it's got a. A hundred foot gap between it, and it. Yeah, right. Yeah, Agua is.
Well, you know, the village board is going to have to straighten this out anyway, because of the, because of the disparity between the written code and the bulk table. Right, it's just written, we, the bulk table is an hour from written one.
I was doing the math in my head, and I don't know this for a fact, but my suspicion is the fifteen feet came about of. A shared alleyway between two buildings that would then be thirty feet.
Right.
Which would meet the fire access. I don't know that for a fact, but just doing the math, it seems like that may have been the reasoning behind it.
It's about the only way that you can make it work, and then it's a shared property thing, which is.
So even.
Especially the ones, the property to the south has marsh, right? Was there wetland to the north of that?
I think one thirty, one.
Yes.
One of those.
Not much, but like ten feet.
Yeah, it was ten feet of, of.
Um, in addition, so in addition to the meeting that, that Mike was suggesting, we may wanna have a meeting between this board, the planning board and the um village board, even just. Maybe just the chairs or some, or representatives, begin to figure out how do we want to. Rezone this, you know, I mean, um, rezone the uh, the setbacks, because it's, it, it may not be working the way the. Everyone's in here for variances and questions have, we've got a major variances for the fire, for the fire trucks, you know, how the, should we.
Okay.
All right, maybe, like, you're, you're probably right, but the plan was, was. In whatever plan they were trying to come up with, was to keep the buildings close enough together that each. Building had half of a lane on both sides, giving both of them access, so that's a jerk, but like. There's wetlands, there's rivers, and weird bridges, you know, that just doesn't, just doesn't work.
Um, all right, so we've given some stuff to think about. I'm, we're gonna be setting a public hearing for next week, for next.
I wouldn't do that, I mean, you would just, I would, I mean, do it if you want, I would give it in the public, but, I mean. Are you asking them to consider changing that, that south side?
Yes.
Well, then we should withhold them here in my last sound.
Should what? I mean, we're, we're comfortable if we do come back with changes, and they do work for us to renotice the hearing and have to. Um, but I think we would like to get the public hearing process started, with the understanding that if we do make changes, it would have to be renoticed to accurately reflect. What the hearing is, you know, so.
Imagine that, if you, um, yeah, sure.
That's cuz, I mean, we're, that causes any issues.
I'm not, I'm not worried about the formalities of public hearing, there's no worry about whether they can, you know, do the thing, listen to this conversation, go back, speak to their people, sit down with engineers. And do this in two weeks.
Yeah, well. Public input would be helpful too, because who knows what they're gonna say, and so it would be better to get it early as opposed to, you know. Designing the site and then the public.
Once we open the public hearing, we're gonna keep it open, because if, if we were to close it, we'd be under, we'd be under a significant time constraint to make a decision. Open it if you want, but I mean, that hearing is open.
We would need, we would need your, your updated drawings by the twenty fifth of Ju- of June, which is two weeks from today.
Or we could, you know, and we could open the public hearing on this, and they could show up a different set of maps, and they're just, we, we'll, we'll be starting much longer time. I mean, I'm not gonna stand on that, that principle, but this is gonna be a longer conversation, the public hearings, each.
Process a little bit more, in that. They're coming to us today for variance with north from the south. You know, you brought up points in terms of the front that were not part of that, I mean, is that something that the planning board is going to have to get input on as well, or, I mean.
Well, so the, the points I brought up were more the, not necessarily the front setback, but how the front of the building affects the question that they're asking us. They're asking for more space, so the building can be shaped like that. If the building's not shaped like that, then they don't need more space, but is there a way?
They shake up that union with the wings from.
Well, no, no, I just mean. Exact dimensions, like if, if, if that building was even. Uh, eight foot longer, then now they're asking for fifty four parents. As opposed to a fifty eight preparedance. Like, so I didn't, I just, like, like I said earlier.
But to see where, the problem there is that if it's eight foot longer, no, nothing else changes, you're gonna have more real estate, you're gonna need more parking.
I understand.
They're losing at least, they said, or you and then said, like, at least a dozen space.
And, and that's, and that's the thing, I don't, I'm not necessarily saying that. This isn't something that could, I'm not, I'm not, I'm definitely not saying that. If the planning board likes the way it looks, and whatever the case may be, that I would, like, I'm not against this variance. I'm saying that I need to make sure for myself that this is the variance that you need.
And that the planning board wants to see.
If they're. That, that's kind of what I'm trying to allude to, in the sense like, should we be hearing more about what the planning board has to say about the project? Before we even think about a variance on this, because they may bring up everything you did and more, that may require them.
And that's why I stopped talking seeker and.
Right, so that's why I'm just, I, I'm just like, in a way, I feel, and again, it's my first time, I almost feel like it's putting the cart before the horse, in the sense like. Planning board hasn't weighed in on this a lot. Should we be doing, I don't, I, again, I don't know, I'll take my cues from you.
I can sort of answer your question, so. They need the variance as it's presented today.
Okay.
If the planning board, then, and they get, go through, if, just say, for example. You guys grant them the variance, they go back to the planning board, they go through the site plan process, more things change, if the variance is different. They're gonna have to come back here again.
Okay.
So, uh, the less, the less they need to go, in which case, you guys are not involved.
So the R variant, if, if, just again, the understatement, I pause. So if we were to grant, let's just say, I think that was saying you granted a variance, and then they go with the planning board, and the planning board asks for all of these other changes to be made, our variance doesn't. Supersede that.
No.
Okay.
No, if the changes change the variance, then they have to come back with variance.
But it's, but it's more than that too. We have, because, especially because of this issue, even if all we're doing is granting the variance and doing it upfront, which is what we typically think about doing. We have to go through the factors, and to some extent, minimum necessary, et cetera, those factors implicate some of these broader issues.
Right.
These design issues, even to some extent, the streetscape issues, so we'd be making that in a vacuum, and this board might want to know. And I would actually want to know whether it's, whether it's possible with the procedures, another question, but if I was deciding for this, on this board. Sort of what we're gonna do with this, you know, what's the minimum variance necessary, what, what's the minimum impact on the neighborhood, right? Um, I don't know what the planning board thought about that, I wanna know what the village board thought about that, that's my thoughts.
This is, this is, this is my concern, the spirit of the law is we want the buildings to be as close together, so that the areas walkable. That's, that's the spirit of this, this is what the law was designed to do. The purpose of all these create, I, I realize that the law is very clunky, okay, that's why you're here, that's why we're very sympathetic. But the intention of the law is to keep those buildings as, as close to each other as possible, and that's not happening here at all. And that's, that's my major concern with this, is that the spirit of the law is not being followed, because we want the place to be walkable. I want, I want people to be able to walk from this building to zero place, to whatever, get a cup of coffee, be like, oh, I don't like this coffee, I wanna go to the other coffee place. And, and, and I want motion of people walking, cuz that's what's gonna alleviate the traffic, that's what's gonna alleviate. All the, all the issues that we have, it's, I'm very pro housing, like, we, we need housing, I'm totally fine with that, but this is not. Doing that, this is, this is maximizing. Residential minimizing. Um, commercial, and it's, it's, it's borderline gated community at this point, because you're not accessing the rail trail, you're at all. You're not accurate, the, the roads in, roads out are, are not really, it's, it's an island. So it's, it's, it's not what that's supposed to do.
But they're necessary.
I, I, I understand that, uh, we, we know there has to be road.
I'm not trying to create an island here, it's just.
Right, I know.
We understand.
But.
The other fact.
But I think, I think you can do a little better. And I think it's probably, and I think. I, I totally was like, you have a month to do this, but I was wrong, you have two weeks. So we probably do wanna kick this can down the road, and let you have, I don't, I don't see how you're gonna figure. I mean, maybe you have a, a crack team of architects ready to go, or you've already bought this fair a little bit more, I don't know what your situation is, but. It, it's probably gonna be a mess if we, and people are gonna come to this. So that public meeting, if they, if we do it, if we don't close it, it's gonna be too for our meetings. Because this is, people are very upset with what happens with some of the buildings that are happening, and they see what's going on, and they're gonna have opinions. So I think you probably wanna have your solution a little bit more ironed out before we.
Sure, and are we in fact getting negative feedback on the um, on the uh, variances for one thirty seven, one forty?
Not, not for the variances, none of the variances, more, cuz those buildings aren't, so until those buildings up, no one cares, and then they'll yell this later.
Okay.
It's more about, it's more about like, everything, everything related to zero place.
Like the concepts of.
And concepts in the project, and stuff like that, like, and so, which I get, it's, it's, it's a big box. Um, and it's, it's, it's not. You know, I'm looking at the front of it, and you have a lot of space in between that, which you've beautified, it, it looks, it looks, I can see your. I can see some of the, the good in that, okay, and I also, but I also look at that bike lane, and that bike lane is not gonna work. It, it, the bike lanes that don't divide physically, people just park right over, all it takes is one person to park wrong. And that bike lane is useless, so it's, I've, I've walked through cities where they do that, and they work. They work if parking enforcement is trying to make money, if parking enforcement's not trying to make money, they don't work at all, so, and I mean, I can. Understand why you'd wanna have parking there, because if you have retail, that would be awesome to have. You know, especially if it was metered and half hour parking only, and that's where the people come in to get their cup of coffee, get their coffee, and that would be ideal. I, I, I'm, I'm getting what some of the stuff you're getting, I like a lot of it, but some of it, I'm.
I suggest in slash offer on this issue. I'm thinking that maybe a good procedure would be, I can speak to Emily, uh, who again represents the planning board. And suggest to her that the planning board consider doing this as a coordinated review, that's actually the best way of doing.
Okay.
And then uh declaring lead agency, and that way, this issue that's troubling you, when you think correctly. The planning board would have to deal with it, and this board could be involved in that, we're an involved agency.
Yeah.
And then it's, the planning board would be the ones to just factor everything in, and the way this works procedurally. Is that we have to do our variance before they can get their site plan approvals. But if there was a coordinated review and the planning board would lead, the planning board would do the seeker review before we give our variance. We would not be giving the variance until they do, you see, so it, and this happens, it sounds bizarre, but it happens a lot, it gets bounced back to the planning board. They do whatever needs to be done in seeker, the whole nine yards, traffic, visuals, and the issue of the community and everything else, they would presumably. You don't know, if they gave a neg deck, then at that, at that point, we would, it come back to us to the variance, but at that point. We would have just an enormous amount of guidance from the planning.
That would also bring the DOT into the discussion.
The negative declaration, if that's what it came down to, would not be just one bare bones document, it would be a significant, even without an EIS. Comes out to a significant study on all the issues that are raised, probably one of those issues, so we would be getting a document from them that. Not only would be guidance for us, but it would actually govern what we do, and, and, and be very helpful, so that's, and this is a very standard procedure, by the. And if it was a type one action, it would be a necessary procedure, but this, it's certainly standard and even recommended. For the um, for uh, for an unlisted action, in particular, the matter of fact, that this board doesn't typically do that sort of broader environmental review. So I can have the conversation with Emily tomorrow, and see if she wants to go in that direction.
Yeah, and just generally, when you need a variance, developers, including us, would prefer to have some sure, you know, surety. That we can have a project, meaning we have the variances, that's why we, we would, you know, I understand what council's saying, but we would still prefer. To move forward with this board first, because under the process that he's talking about, we could be going through the seeker review for a, a year or two. Who knows, depending on how much the public opposition is. Without any guarantee that when we come back to you, it's gonna be the same board that's sitting in front of us now, saying, you know, we have some comments, but we're willing to consider it. If you were to.
I just want, I just wanna point out to council, um, this board is gonna be sympathetic toward, toward developing this, uh, moving in that area, and doing what's necessary. Just be a question of getting guidance from your agency.
I, I think. Your best bet. And uh, uh, you guys can jump in at any moment, um, would be to make that better. Yeah, so, cuz if that was better, I would, this would be a different conversation. It's not better, it needs to be better. Why don't we, so, yeah. So why don't we meet again in two weeks, let's, you guys. And you'll come back with something better.
Yeah, do you, we having a special meeting in two weeks?
I'm sorry, and the next. I'm, I'm looking, and, and I'm, I'm, I was assuming a month, that's, that's on me, I, I, I was like, a month, you can totally do some month, but in two weeks, you're not gonna be able to do it. It's, it, you're. You're gonna do, you're gonna do a portal, it's gonna look horrible, and you need to, someone needs to sit down with a lot of coffee. And figure this out, this is, this is, this is several.
Want to do something, come back before the board?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll hold it on the public hearing, you wanna come, come back and, if you can get it done in two weeks, then we'll see next month, or otherwise, we'll kick it down to um. To August then.
Okay.
We don't feel like we're in a position to. Have a plan that, that is ready for you to look at, then we would just not submit it at that time.
Yes, and then, and they come, could they come in and show it to us? If they didn't get the.
This board is sitting together, that we have, we'll have to have a special meeting, we can do that.
No, I'm saying, I know, I'm saying next month, if they don't, if they don't get it in two weeks, but they haven't done in.
This is up to your procedures, I mean, usually, boards in your situation, you wanna see something a certain amount of time in advance, so you have time to read it, and that. But the answers are, that's what this, you, you, if you wanna supersede your own procedures, the answer is you can do that.
Okay, I would, I would be chuffed with that, I mean, can you get it in three weeks, I'll give you an extra week, would that be doable, or is that not doable?
My, my side of this, the someone in the hearing side.
Yeah.
I believe is. I don't wanna say it's easier, but it takes less time than what the architect is gonna have to go through and figure out how the interior works out.
Okay.
Um. I'd like to say you could do that, but I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna speak to other designers.
If you're call, and you can see what they have, and if you believe it's, it's enough to look forward, then.
Yeah, I'll get, I'll leave it up to you guys, if you have something in a month, and you bring it in, um. Cody is very good at dissecting plans, I'm decent at it, and. So if you have something, great, if you need another, if you need more time, you take your time, this is not gonna, this, you're not gonna. As much as trying to make. Yeah, I'd rather you do a better job and, and, and it in late than end it in early, and, and we're just gonna do this now.
So to be clear, the basic goal of the board is to try to close some of that space on the southern end of the property, boy, that's the one sentence. And secondarily, it may be to, maybe bring a little bit more retail, perhaps a little bit less residential, that's what, that would be a preference, but. Fundamentally, just to bring it down a little bit further south.
And if, and if it was less of an island, and I know you, I know it's not your fault, I totally understand the, 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 the property, but. If there was an escape route to the rail trail, then you're no longer an island, and now you, and now you're opening up space. So, it's, so there, there are ways to make this less of an island than it is.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're certainly trying to make sure this can work, I wanna reiterate that, that, like. We're saying these things because these are the things that have worked very close to you and in the. That's understood.
All right. If I may just ask the applicant, or your representatives, from a procedural standpoint, if you can send a, a withdrawal of the challenge.
Sure.
Officially, so then we'll go forward with the area variance application. And uh. Then we'll go from there.
Okay, any questions? Hey, that looks good. I'd like to have a motion to close the meeting.
You wanna vote on the minutes?
No, it's not your.
Yeah, yeah, I'll double check.
Okay, so we're gonna, I, I motion to close the meeting. Okay, cool, uh, both, I, meanings both, have a great day.
Thank you.
No problem, oh, that's. Is your name really Buddy?
Uh, it's Charles.
Okay, is that your nickname?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Thank you for your time, guys, I appreciate all your comments, understood.
Sure, I wanna ask one question.
Can you kill the TV?